The ability to go to live streaming.
Okay. Give it just a second to click in and then.
Yeah, I could do the recording, but I don't see where I can do the live streaming. With these permissions.
Okay, so it looks like your live streaming is on now.
Good.
And we are about to, there we go. So let's begin with our interviews tonight. I see that Jim is in the audience at this point, so we can bring him in. You might want to change his label there.
There he comes.
Hello.
There he is.
How's it going, Jim?
Good.
So you put your application in for the Board of School Board of Trustees quite some time ago. Good to finally get around to interviewing you here. So you've probably seen some of these interviews in the past. It's pretty, pretty simple. We'll ask a few questions and then we'll probably be letting you very quickly. So what inspired you to throw your hat into the ring for this position? And what do you think you will?
Actually, yeah, so when I was considering running for town council, I started looking at the town a little closer, including the financial statements. And then in the notes, I saw the school trust fund, which was something honestly, as a citizen, I was unaware of. And then just learning a little bit more about it and the availability of the funds, just brought up some questions. I've had some experience mostly on pension boards, overseeing some of the investments and making some recommendations. So I thought it'd be interesting. I noticed that, you know, you had two open seats on the committee.
Questions for Jim. Well, obviously, your experience in municipal finance speaks very highly for your ability to serve well on this board, I would think. Is there anything you'd like to highlight sort of from your resume that then speaks particularly well to this board?
I think it's less about my municipal finance. I think it's more about my time in public accounting. We did quite a bit of work on trust funds as well as overall investments and as well as sharing when I was in the city of New London there pension committee. We were privately funded as a pension as well as Wesley. Wesley, I didn't share it. I was on the committee, the investment committee. We had private pension funds. So, you know, I understand, and I'm pretty conservative as far as a person. So I think that's something that you want, especially in governmental, when you're, you have a trust of public funds. I mean, and this is a pretty sizable trust and, and hopefully that it can be used to supplement some of the educational things that it's allowed to.
Jim, this is Brian. I just wanted to thank you for throwing your hat in the ring for this position. And I think the lack of questions is the fact that you're more than qualified.
Thank you.
And so we do appreciate that.
Right. All right. Last chance. Anybody want to ask Jim a question? All right. Very good. Well, thank you for coming before us this evening, Jim. We should be able to let you know fairly quickly. And then again, thank you for volunteering for this spot.
Well, thank you.
Good night. And I see that Christie Soret is now in the attendees. If you could bring her in. Christie, you're now in.
Hello.
Hello again. So it has not been long since we last interviewed you, but maybe give us an update on your experience now that you've been on the Housing Authority Board for a little while? And where you hope things are going from here?
Things are going really well. It's been exciting. It's been a long and arduous summer. We interviewed many people for the executive director position and we hired someone and we're very excited about it. And I just got out of the Housing Authority meeting maybe 20 minutes ago. So I'm really excited. We're working on some grants and hopefully getting that laundry facility put in place, hopefully sooner than later. And it's, we got a lot going on.
Questions for Chris.
I just have one question. When will you be making the public announcement about the new director?
That's a good question. I'm not really sure about that. I can't answer that. It hasn't been done already.
No.
No notification of it, so.
Yeah, to my knowledge, it hasn't been done yet. I found out by accident by talking to Narikant.
Okay, I'll talk to Chris a little about that.
It's a big deal. It's a good thing. So we'd like to be able to amplify.
Absolutely.
And Christie, related but not related, the South Kingstown Lions has a few thousand dollars set aside for the basketball hoops.
Oh, that's amazing. That's good. Thank you so much for that.
You're welcome. Just need to know who to give it to.
All right. Any other questions for Christie? All right. Very good. Well, thank you for serving on that very important board for.
Very welcome.
And we will let you know in short order.
Okay, great. Have a good night. Have a very happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
You as well.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Right. And with that, we can get into the meat of the work session here and go through the agenda. It's like a lot of liquor license, public hearings in front of us. Am I reading this right? That one of them is a new license?
That is correct. That is for Baja's. Who they came before you at the end of September for the vichyling license. They're over in the Belmont Plaza. And they're now seeking a Class B limited liquor license. That's the beer and wine license. So you have to go back. Once you close the public hearing, you have to jump to new business item A in order to determine whether you want to increase the number of that category of license in order to go back to the public hearing if you wish to grant that license.
Thank you. We will do that. All right, Rob, anything you'd like to highlight for us?
All right, I'd like to just run through communications and some of the new business communications. Tonight, I sent an email off and was playing voicemail tag with Carolyn Rizwald today. My last voicemail message from Carolyn was that she'd be more than happy to talk to us about the technologies, technology issues that she's experienced since we've been on Zoom. She did indicate that she didn't think it would change her mind about resigning in December. However, she would be happy to talk to us and share her experiences and explain the difficulties and frustrations that she had encountered with moving to a virtual environment. Since she did indicate in that voicemail that it probably wouldn't change her mind, I might suggest to the council that there's no urgency in accepting a resignation for December at this meeting. And I'd like to have one more chance to speak to her. This letter from Andrew Gil Martin dealing with the gun range. It's a, it's an interesting theory that Mr. Gil Martin has put forward essentially is theory is that the town, when it allowed the indoor gun range to begin operations, really lacked the legal authority to do so because indoor gun ranges are not allowed in the residential zone. I haven't actually talked to Mike about this, but my suspicion is that what the town's position is going to be on this is that what the town did when it allowed for the indoor range was simply put walls around a use that was already going on. So it was a reduction in the harm being caused by a outdoor use, by allowing it to be done with walls around it. That having been said, I, I know the council here is occasionally about issues arising from the operation of the outdoor range as well. And I had another pretty passionate plea today from a couple that live in the South Woods neighborhood to do whatever we can as a town to begin to restrain the expansion of that operation. People in the neighborhood just to the north of the facility and folks on the other side of Indian Lake do experience an awful lot of noise and it's beginning to have a very deleterious effect, according to the folks who were on the phone with me today, to people's well-being, their mental health, and the value of property in that neighborhood. This is becoming a real challenge. The gun range, when it changed hands several years ago, was a fairly small operation. Better business management has increased the use of that facility and it is becoming a larger challenge as time goes by. We have a email here from Mr. Stappens indicating that he would like to speak to the council or the planning board. It's not clear from his email, but he wants to address publicly his concerns about the condo development that's been proposed for Mattoonik. Michaela Court, I've spoken to Doug Gilbert today. He has finally, or the group that lives on Michaela Court have finally made contact with the developer, Alex Protucci, who built this housing development. And the developer acknowledges that it's his responsibility to snowplow until the road is accepted. And he understands that the road cannot be accepted until it is offered by the developer to the town. The developer indicated today and, or recently in conversations with residents over there that he intends, one, to offer the property to the town to meet the conditions that the town has set for acceptance and to snowplow at his, the developer's expense this winter. So that issue seems to have at least subsided for the moment. We have an email from Doral Beasley concerning RGB Architects and the recent indictment of its principal, Dave DeQuatro. This has been the subject of an awful lot of discussion around town. Bottom line on where we as a community are is none of what Mr. DeQuatro has been accused of doing was done here in South Kingstown. There's been no contact by anybody in the US Attorney's Office or anyone else with the South, town of South Kingstown or South Kingstown officials. It is wholly beyond the contracts and transactions that involve people here in South Kingstown. However, it does raise real concerns about the trustworthiness of the firm that is at this point, one of our largest vendors. So Mr. Beasley may be on the phone tonight to talk some about that. The oil, waste oil and filter recycling really is just a matter of making sure that we're covering our costs. We take fuel oil or waste oil, not fuel oil, but mostly motor vehicle oil. We take oil at the recycling center up at the Rose Hill Transfer Station. It costs us money to dispose of it and we're covering our costs with the proposed fees associated with that. We don't believe that this will adversely impact collection. We will monitor it. Obviously, we don't want people storing oil just because they don't want to pay the fee. But these are not extremely high fees and we think that it will allow us to cover our costs without deterring people from bringing their waste oil to the transfer station. A purchase of a pickup truck because the one that we're replacing has a transmission that is failing. This is a very interesting E in new business is a very interesting item. There is a company out of California that has developed essentially a smartphone version of a defibrillator. It's a size, a little bit bigger than a smartphone and it's very heavy on software. The company has not yet had their product approved by the FDA for efficacy or safety, but they're undergoing that process right now. And they hope that as soon as they've got FDA approval, they will be able to prove their concept in communities across the country. We are one of 20 communities that has been approached. And the basic model here is you put these very low cost AEDs scattered around a community in close proximity to one another. And then when someone is having a heart attack, dispatch sends a signal to the device. The device sends out an auditory alarm. People go to this place and they see a map on the smart screen of the device where there's a person down and they take the device to that person and give defibrillation. There's instructions. There's an audio interface. There's all sorts of really neat technology built around this device. Idea that if you can get defibrillation going within four minutes of someone's going down, you really improve their rate of or chance of survival. So the more of these devices and the more people who are not afraid to use them, and this is a really designed to be a very user-friendly device, the more likely it is that people will survive. So it's a, it's a really neat piloting program. It doesn't cost us anything. We get the technology to demonstrate and prove it. And then, you know, after, after the company is up and running and we've seen the products hit the market, hopefully we'll be able to take advantage of the fact that we've known the product and we're, have a pre-existing relationship with the company. A resolution with OCV LLC to purchase a smart application, a smartphone application for town communications with the public. We've had challenges in recent years because we have multiple channels. We have Facebook. We have the webpage. We have code red for emergencies. We have multiple communication channels to the public and they don't speak to one another. This application is a smartphone-based application and it's also a one-to-many broadcast application. So we will put a message into one screen. It will go out to all of the people who've downloaded the smartphone application as a notice like you receive from CNN or what have you. It'll also go directly from that one notification portal to our Facebook page, to our webpage and to any other social media we identify like Twitter or Instagram or something like that. So it's a one-to-many publication tool and it's also a tool that will allow the public through their smartphones to give us information. They could provide tips to the police department, for example, on how to, or on crimes that they've witnessed or issues that they've seen, pothole notifications potentially, this sort of thing. So it's a, it's a really neat way to use the technology that now is ubiquitous. And we're getting a huge discount because this too is a company that's trying to expand its market into the Northeast. So we've received an initial first in Rhode Island discount of really, we're paying a third of what the retail should be on this. A resolution to accept the Hang 10 proposal, the bid for the properties, the Mary Carpenter's lots in Mattoonik. There's a memorandum on this. This is a very longstanding project here in South Kingstown, going back probably four, five, six years now. The owner of the Ocean Mist Hang 10 LLC has offered the only bid that came in when we went out for a request for proposals. The only proposal that came in was a payment of $95,000. However, in conversations with the proposer and in negotiations with the proposer, additional consideration has been put on the table and we'll have a discussion tonight about all of that. I'm happy to come back to this in a minute and answer any questions on that because the memo I know laid out what that consideration was in some ways and left some open questions. So I'm happy to answer that, but I'm just going to run through the rest of the agenda before coming back to that one big item. The next item up is a performance-based bonus that I'm asking the council to give to the town clerk. You know, I am a huge supporter of recognizing good work and we try to do that in a lot of different ways. But sometimes there's performance that is just so above and beyond what one really reasonably can expect from a, an employee that it requires, justice requires that we consider additional compensation. This is really the case with Susan Flynn's performance over the course of the last six or eight months. In a typical year, you might see two elections. You might see a primary and you might see a general election. And you might in those two elections see two or maybe 300 emergency ballots, write-in ballots, mail-in ballots. In the course of the last six months, Susan has seen four elections, two of which included month-long polling place openings. And she saw 17,000 mail-in applications, mail-in ballots. Just an absolutely extraordinary change in the nature of the work. And she did this without a deputy. She was working as her own deputy during this period of time. The fact that she was able to get those four elections done with the amount of change and, and adjustment that had to be made was truly extraordinary. And I, I think that if her work doesn't speak for her, I don't know what does. It's just been a phenomenal success over the last six months on this, this stuff. We have a ratification of an executive order. We do have an amendment to this when we get to it. This is basically just the standard travel and quarantine restrictions from the state. The amendment that I'm going to ask the council to make is to change the reference to the underlying governor's executive order. The underlying order has changed. The original order that the governor put in place has been superseded by one from last week. So we're going to change that reference. The ratification of the executive order 13, 2013, is the executive order that I issued on Thursday to allow the state to open a testing facility at South Road School. I'm going to ask the council to ratify that because it's an action that's already been taken. But then the next item K is to authorize me to negotiate a term going forward. Now, in effect, what this means is J will allow me to keep them in the building for the next 30 days and K will allow me to negotiate license or lease for longer than 30 days. And that is our agenda. So I'm happy to go back to Hang 10 if anyone has questions about Hang 10.
Sure. Why don't you? Well, any questions on anything else, everybody? Okay, yeah, take us back to item G.
So this is a fairly complicated problem because we're being driven by things that are historic more than anything else. We are not, have not offered this property for sale because we need to sell it. We haven't offered the property for sale because we find that we have absolutely no use for it. We don't have much use for it. We have some use for it and we have used it. But it isn't a particularly important piece of our property inventory. But it doesn't really cost us a lot to maintain either. So it's not, it's not being driven by a programmatic need. It's being driven by sort of an expectation that the community might be better served if the property were in private hands. We're, we're not making tremendously great use of the property and we don't have any plans, really we don't have any reasonable expectation of making a public investment that will make this a community asset. On the other hand, we have a private property owner who owns adjoining property and property up and down the road, who says that if given the property, given the opportunity and ownership of the property, he will make improvements to it that will make it a community asset. He is, hope is to rebuild the Mary Carpenter's relic wall or historic wall and to do so in a way that makes it a pedestrian-friendly surface. Right now, the wall is suffered over the years and the rocks have all sort of slid and they're out of place and they're, they're, they're just not a safe place for anyone to walk, really even to stand and fish from because there's just not a level surface anywhere on the wall. The owner of the Ocean Mist maintains that by rebuilding it, he will improve safety for his property to the east. And he will also produce a place where someone can safely walk, can safely, you know, stand and fish. He'll be able to put sand in between where the wall is and where the road is and just make it a better place for people to go. There's a high probability, I would suggest, that the owner at some point will want to look at that area as a service area for the restaurant next door, the Ocean Mist. And the question really is, is this just a better use of this property? Now, one of the things that we've taken pains to ensure, and in fact, that the, the owner of the property next door has contributed to, is making sure that there are easements in favor of the public for access to the ocean. There are easements essentially all the way around these two parcels. All four sides of the property have got easements that would allow the public to pass, repass, get to the water, enjoy the view, that sort of thing. So what we're really talking about in some sense, it's kind of a square donut. But what we're really talking about is ownership and control of the whole in this square donut. And really, the donut itself is always going to be accessible by the public no matter what. So if we believe that the owner stands a better chance of making investments that will improve the whole of the donut, then we may in fact have a way to increase the attractiveness of the village to provide an amenity at private rather than public expense. Now, the monies involved here are also not very straightforward. We purchased the property with 60 or $65,000 worth of federal highway money and we've put out to bid this property and we've received a proposal that includes $95,000 worth of purchase money. 60 of that has to go back to the highway fund. It'll go back to Rhode Island DOT. I don't know if they're going to give it back to the feds or not, but it'll go back to Rhode Island DOT. And we will be left with a balance of 35 on the purchase money. However, in conversations with the adjacent property owner, he has also offered to assist in the construction of our seawall. And this gets into a more complicated conversation, which we're happy to have again in public when we get it into the meeting. But essentially what that means is the property owner adjacent to us would be willing to make a monetary contribution toward the construction of our wall before beginning construction of his wall. Now, I say before, we'd have to coordinate this. He wants to be able to get to the construction of his seawall and that pedestrian-friendly surface as soon as possible, but I think we can coordinate the time. And that's all I've got for time on this one, I think, right?
We are very close to 7:30 now. Any final questions for Rob? Right. In that case, Susan, could you get us all ready for the start of the meeting? In that case, Susan, could you get us all ready for the start of the meeting?
Susan, it's Collins. So it looks like you are streaming and recording, so you are good to go.
Yeah. All right. Well, one of my computers says it's 7:30, so. Welcome everyone to this meeting of the South Kingstown Town Council. It is Monday, November 23rd. The time is 7:30. Our first order of business is the pledge to the flag. Susan, you would please lead us in that? Be grateful.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And that brings us to the roll call.
Council President Collins.
Here.
Council Vice President DeCruz.
Here.
Councilwoman Kelso.
Here.
Councilman McEntee. Councilman McEntee. Let's skip to Councilman Veely for the moment.
Here.
Thank you. Councilman McEntee, are you still with us? I think he stepped out for a moment.
Yes, he was unaware of the time.
It's probably more than that. Usually Rory's picture comes up when he.
There he is.
Sorry about that. Had a little difficulty here.
Okay, thank you. All members are present.
Perfect. Thank you. Item four is the approval of minutes of previous meetings.
Rory McEntee, I'll make a motion to approve for A, B, and C.
Deb Kelso, I'll second that.
You have a motion from Rory, a second by Deb. Is there any discussion? Is there anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimously and brings us to item five, the consent agenda.
Rory McEntee, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Deb Kelso, I'll second that.
Motion from Rory, second from Deb. Is there any discussion? Is there anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimously as well. And that brings us to item six licenses. Six A is a resolution granting victualling and holiday sales licenses to Wakefield Nutrition, doing business as Wakefield Nutrition of 359 Main Street in Wakefield, application by Samantha Elliott. Is there someone here representing this license application? If you are, click the raise hand button on your or if you're on your, on their phone. Okay, we'll come back to six A. Six B is a resolution granting a victualling license to Ilya Five, doing business as Neopolis of 60 South County Commons Way, Wakefield, Rhode Island, application by Pasquale Iliano. And we can bring both John Kenyon and Pasquale in. All right, John and Pasquale, you're both in the meeting now. Looks like you are unmuted and visible. And John, I don't know if you wanted to start it off. Of course, you are on the agenda a little bit later on as well, but tell us, tell us about Neopolis.
Sure. Thank you. I'm John Kenyon, attorney for the applicant Ilya Five LLC. This, the property is located at 60 South County Commons Way, where the old Pasquale's pizzeria used to be. And he's now proposing a store that will also have food service. And so Pasquale is here. If you, Pasquale, if you want to tell them specifically, this hearing is for the victualling license. So about the food you're going to be serving.
Good evening, everybody. We have started, it is a new store. It's an Italian market with a little bit of a flair of imports tasting. And we actually warmed up the place already within a couple of weeks and everything is going very well. And it's just a little concept that includes a takeout market with, we have a few seats for customers to come in and enjoy charcuterie boards, a few little gourmet sandwiches. And if it's possible to have a glass of wine with it, it's more of an all-around experience of market shopping.
Questions for the applicant? What are your proposed hours of operation?
What's our operations? It would be Mondays closed, Tuesday to Saturday, 11:00 a.m. to 6:30 p.m. And Sunday from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m.
All right. Are there any further questions? If not, do I hear a motion?
Joe Veely, I'll make a motion to approve agenda item six B.
Deb Kelso, I'll second that.
Motion by Joe, second by Deb. Any further discussion? Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimously. We'll see you guys in a little bit. So stick around. For now, let's go to six C. A resolution granting a victualling license to Anderson Enterprises, doing business as DB's Pizza, 546 Kingstown Road, application by Jonathan Anderson. So I'm here earlier. Got Don Lally. Are we bringing in?
I found him. He disappeared.
John did. There he is. All right, very good. Jonathan, you're in the meeting now. You just got to click on that little microphone button to unmute yourself. And if you want to be seen, you can click on the video camera icon that's next to it.
There we go. We good?
We're great. If you want to lead us off, Don or Jonathan, Ellis.
John, I'll start. John's been working at DB's since 2004. The menu is going to remain the same. He is purchasing it from the Burns and his hours of operation are Sunday and Monday, 11 to 8, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, 11 to 9. Presently, it's all takeout. There are no tables of people to sit at. Hopefully after the COVID, that'll change.
We hope so. Any questions for Jonathan or Don? All right. Well, I think we all know DB's Pizza well. Do I hear a motion on this one?
Rory McEntee, I'll make a motion to approve six C.
Deb Kelso, I'll second that.
Motion from Rory, second from Deb. Any further discussion? Is that, is there anyone opposed? That motion carries unanimously. We'll see you guys a little bit later. Good luck.
All right, thank you.
All right. I just want to have this opportunity to see if anybody showed up for six A. That was a victualling and holiday sales license for Wakefield Nutrition. Has anyone joined to speak on that application? Did we hear from that applicant that they were going to be able to make it tonight?
We have had no luck contacting them and getting a response either by email or phone calls. We had heard from them when they first applied and going through the process, but we've had a hard time getting in touch with them over the past week.
Yeah. We, of course, had some communications issues recently with another applicant. I don't know if we'd want to choose the same path or just continue this to the next meeting, I mean.
I would make a recommendation of continuing this to the next meeting.
I don't believe it's a language communications issue in this case.
I would agree with that. All right. Do I hear a motion to continue item six A to the next meeting?
This is Brian. I'll make a motion to continue item six A to the next meeting.
Joe Veely, second.
Motion by Brian, second by Joe. Any discussion? Is there anyone opposed? That motion carries unanimously and that will bring us to item seven, public hearings. Seven A is a public hearing relative to the renewal of liquor licenses for the year beginning December 1st, 2020. Said licenses are granted contingent upon the issuance of a certificate of good standing from the Rhode Island Division of Taxation, issuance of a certificate of insurance evidencing required liability coverage, compliance with all town ordinances and regulations, the payment of any municipal taxes, user fees and lease payments and arrears to the town, and the correction of any fire code violations. Applications for licenses to sell intoxicating beverages under the provision of Title III of the General Laws of 1956 as amended have been filed as follow. Class B victualler, VGB LLC, doing business as Pasquale's Pizzeria in Apolatano, 59 South County Commons Way, Wakefield, Rhode Island, by Pasquale Iliano, member for the first floor dining and bar areas in accordance with a special use permit granted January 19th, 2005 by the zoning board of review and as further defined in a site plan on file in the town clerk's office. And class B tavern, M Filio's Inc., doing business as Bistro by the Sea by Richard A. Palo, president, 364 Cards Pond Road, Wakefield, Rhode Island, first floor restaurant gazebo for intermission, tents on tennis court and 32 by 50 foot patio in accordance with special use permits granting, granted by the zoning board of review on August 15th, 2007 and March 17th, 2010, and further defined in the site plan on file in the town clerk's office. All right. So if we can bring in, John and Pasquale are here. And is Richard Palo here as well?
Abel, he was not asked to attend. This is just a renewal of liquor licenses being done because they didn't get heard in the first round of renewals at the last meeting.
Gotcha. Okay. Well, very good. And I mean, similarly, I guess that applies equally to Pasquale here. Because we already granted this one as well. Nevertheless, if John and Pasquale, you want to talk about this license, you are welcome to. We will open it up for public comments after you speak.
Sure, thank you. And once again, John Kenyon, attorney for VGB LLC. This is a renewal. It's actually for the, to make things even more confusing, the restaurant across the street from the one we were just talking about at 59 South County Commons Way. I believe it was just inadvertently left off last, your last meeting. So it's on for tonight. We can answer any questions you or the public have.
Any questions on this renewal? This being a public hearing, I will open it up to anyone who might want to make a comment from the public. Just hit that raise hand button or if you're on a phone, hit star nine. All right, seeing none, do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
Joe Veely, I'll make a motion to close public hearing seven A.
This is Brian. I'll second that motion.
Motion from Joe, second from Brian. Any further discussion? Is there anyone opposed? That motion carries unanimously. And do I hear a motion on seven A?
Motion to approve, Joe Veely.
Deb Kelso, I'll second that.
Right. A motion from Joe, second from Deb. Any further discussion? Anyone opposed? That motion carries unanimously. And stick around, guys. We move on to seven B, a public hearing relative to an application for transfer of license to keep and sell alcoholic beverages in South Kingstown in accordance with the general laws of 1956 as amended as follows. Class B limited liquor license, transfer of a class B limited liquor license from VGB LLC, doing business as Pasquale's Pizzeria in Apolatano, 60 South County Commons Way, by Pasquale Iliano, member to Ilya Five LLC, doing business as Neopolis, 60 South County Commons Way, Wakefield, Rhode Island, Pasquale Iliano, a member for the dining and counter areas in accordance with a special use permit granted by the zoning board of review on April 15th, 2015, and as further defined in a site plan on file in the town clerk's office. Said transfer to be effective December 1st, 2020, and contingent upon the issuance of a certificate of good standing from the Rhode Island Division of Taxation, issuance of a certificate of insurance evidencing required liability coverage, compliance with all town ordinances and regulations, payment of any municipal taxes, user fees and lease payments and arrears to the town, correction of any fire code violations, and the satisfaction of all claims. All right. So tell us about this one.
Thank you. Once again, John Kenyon, attorney for the applicant. So Pasquale Iliano is the owner of the VGB LLC, which currently holds the class B limited liquor license for 60 South County Commons Way. He's been operating there for over five years. As stated earlier, he's received a liquor license for across the street. He's seeking to transfer this liquor license to Ilya's Five LLC, which is also owned by him. He's the sole member of the LLC. That location, as we stated earlier, will be now more of a store with some food service. And he'd also like to be able to serve a glass of wine while people are shopping. They can sit and eat an appetizer at one of the tables. There'll be some high-top tables with a total of about eight chairs for people to sit and eat with a glass of wine. It's sort of a new concept for the town, but as Pasquale says, people are very excited about it. There were a couple objections filed by liquor distributors that have since been withdrawn. We haven't heard of any other objections. Pasquale is here tonight. Pasquale, maybe once again, you can give a brief description of what you're proposing along with the hours of operation again.
The hours of operations are, like I said before, from Monday, Monday is a closing day, Tuesday to Saturday, 11:00 a.m. to 6:30 p.m. And it's Sunday, 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And the store is a vision that I had for a little while. And it's an Italian store, a gourmet store, and also catering service that provides a taste of numerous Italian imports, as well as cheeses, charcuteries, gourmet sandwiches and all that. And the reason why I wanted to transfer the license on that is because I think the whole experience will be completed from customers enjoying, you know, the food that we also offer while they're shopping with a nice glass of wine. Just a simple little concept.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? All right. It is a public hearing, so we'll open it up for any public comments that might be out there. And if you are on a phone, just hit the star nine to raise your hand. Otherwise, click the little icon that says raise hand. All right, seeing none, do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
Deb Kelso, motion to close the public hearing.
This is Brian. I'll second that motion.
Second, uh, motion from Deb, second from Bryant. Any further discussion? Is there anyone opposed? That motion carries unanimously. And do I hear a motion on seven B?
This is Bryant. I'll make a motion to approve item seven B.
Rory Mackin, see, I'll second that motion.
Motion from Bryant, second from Rory. Any further discussion? Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimously. Good luck, guys. Sounds exciting.
Thank you very much. Appreciate. Looking forward to see you all. Thank you.
Have a good Thanksgiving, everyone.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, class. Seven C is a public hearing relative to an application for transfer of a license to keep and sell alcoholic beverages in South Kingstown. In accordance with the general laws of nineteen fifty-six as amended as follows. Class B limited liquor license, transfer of a class B limited liquor license from Burn Enterprises, Inc. Doing business as DB's Pizza. Five forty-six Kingstown Road, uh, by William Byrne, president to Anderson Enterprises LLC doing businesses DB's Pizza. By Jonathan Anderson, uh, member of five forty-six Kingstown Road. For the first floor dining area, uh, tables only as described in the special exception granted by the zoning board of review on January twentieth, nineteen eighty-eight. And as further defined in a site plan on file in the town clerk's office. Said transfer to be effective December first, twenty twenty and contingent upon the issuance of a certificate of good standing from the Rhode Island Division of Taxation. Issuance of a certificate of insurance evidencing required liability coverage, compliance with all town ordinances and regulations. The payment of any municipal taxes, user fees and lease payments and arrears to the town, correction of any fire code violations and the satisfaction of all claims. All right, there's Don again. And John, welcome back.
Thank you. Um, yeah, Don Lally for, uh, Jonathan Anderson. Again, um. He, uh. He's not having any sit downs yet, but, um. It would be, he'd like to be able to continue to have this license so that when COVID's over and he has a few people to sit at the, uh, table or a counter. That they'd be allowed to have a glass, you know, bottled beer or a glass of wine with their pizza. Or whatever they calzone, whatever they. Order. Um, I don't believe there's been any issues with, um, the license with the Burns or with the Lumises before them. And again, John's worked there since two thousand and four and, um. You know, we'd like your permission to have this license transferred.
Okay, I imagine this license would also be necessary in order to keep doing, you can serve takeout, uh, liquor services during the emergency. Is that right? Because of this license?
Yeah, I'm not sure that John's doing, uh, John, are you there?
I'm here.
Okay. Are you doing any takeout for barrel wine right now?
No, I'm not.
Okay. So we're not strictly food.
Would he be able to, under that emergency, uh, declaration, be able to do that with this license?
Um, I would think.
This is Mike, so he would be like any other restaurant.
Okay, just wanted to check and make sure.
But at this point, he hasn't chosen to go down that path.
Very good. Um. All right, any questions for the applicants? All right, uh, this being a public hearing, we'll open it up for public comment, uh, at this point. If there's anybody who would like to say anything. Uh, just raise your hand. We will recognize you in the order that your hands are raised. All right, seeing none, uh, do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
Deb Kelso, motion to close the public hearing.
Joe Vili, second.
Motion from Deb, second from Joe. Any further discussion? Is there anyone opposed? Seeing none, that motion carries unanimously. Uh, do I hear a motion on seven C?
Joe Vili, a motion to approve agenda item seven C.
And Deb Kelso, I'll second that.
From Joe, second from Deb. Any discussion? Anyone opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Uh, thank you for coming tonight, Don, John. Uh, good luck.
Look, thank you very much.
Have a safe Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
You too. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that brings us to seven D, a public hearing relative to an application for a license to keep and sell alcoholic beverages. In South Kingstown in accordance with the general laws of nineteen fifty-six as amended as follows. Class B limited liquor license, application for a class B limited liquor license by Baja's Express. Uh, doing businesses Fresh Baja's Mexican Grill, six hundred Kingstown Road, Wakefield, Rhode Island by Bahi's Putros. Member for the dining area in accordance with a special use permit granted September sixteenth, twenty twenty. By the zoning board of review and is further defined in a site plan on file in the town clerk's office. Said license to be effective December first, twenty twenty and contingent upon the issuance of a certificate of good standing from the Rhode Island Division of Taxation. Issuance of a certificate of insurance evidencing required liability coverage, compliance with all town ordinances and regulations. Payment of any municipal taxes, user fees and lease payments and arrears to the town and the correction of any fire code violations. Hello, David, is there, are you alone tonight?
Yes, actually, no, my wife, I'm in, I'm in a room by myself in a separate room.
But you're here, just representing. Yes, very good. Um. All right, well, tell us, I mean, uh, you came before us not long ago for, uh, the original, uh, vixeling license. Um, tell us about, uh, the plans for this expansion into liquor service.
Yeah, I somehow I had a misunderstanding. I thought the meeting that we had the first time it was for both licenses visual and because they ask us about the beer and the wine. And we explained to him how we're going to serve it and how we can handle it. I guess I was misunderstood. Uh, business been doing okay. We've been having a good feedback. The town likes it. The city likes it. We've been shutting down at ten o'clock. We have the safety regulation for COVID nineteen. As far as the beer and wine, uh, the same conversation that we had, uh, in the past that. I don't think it's going to generate any big revenue. It's just that because Wakefield is a city and a town and family oriented the town. We've been getting maybe like forty, fifty percent student and another fifty percent family. So I thought just the family would be nice if somebody comes in and they having some spicy food and they want to have a beer with it. Uh, that something would be good. We'll be getting our beers all plastic bottle, no, no glass bottle. And, uh. If we do get a glass for any reason, we emptied in a plastic cup and handled it to the customers with COVID nineteen, we just give plastic cups. It's just something different, just to make it the nice for the people to come in with his wife and the family and to have a nice, good spicy Mexican and a beer with it. That's all.
Very good. Any questions? All right, seeing no questions from the council, uh, we'll open it up, uh, to the public for comments. If there's anybody who would like to make a comment on this application, please raise your hand now. All right. Seeing none, uh, do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
This is Brian. I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Deb Kelso, I'll second that.
Motion by Bryant, second by Deb. Is there any discussion? Is there anyone opposed? Very good. That motion carries unanimously. And before we can vote on seven D, assuming we prove it, I'm going to call forward item. From new business eleven A, which is a resolution affirming or amending the town's liquor license rules and regulations. Section one, the current number of licenses for each class shall be authorized as indicated below unless changed by majority vote of the town council. So this would change, we want to allow this license, uh, the class B limited go from four to five. And do I hear such a motion?
Deb Kelso, motion to approve item eleven A.
So the, the motion actually would be to amend eleven A to increase the B limited from four to five. That's Mike Gerso.
I will amend my motion to include the solicitor's language.
Joe Vili, second.
Now we have a motion from Deb, a second from Joe. Any discussion? There anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimously. And now do I hear a motion on seven D?
Deb Kelso, motion to approve item seven D.
Joe Vili, second.
Motion from Deb, second from Joe. Is there any discussion? Is there anyone opposed?
No.
That motion carries unanimously. Uh, good luck, David and Bahi's and, uh, hope to see you over there.
Thank you so much. God bless. Happy Thanksgiving. Be safe. Thank you.
Have a good night. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
All right, very good. So that brings us to item eight on our agenda tonight, communications. Eight A is an email dated November fifth, twenty twenty from Carolyn Griswold advising that she does not wish to be, uh, continue serving on the historic district commission when her term expires in December. This was continued from the last meeting. Uh, Rob, you had, uh, spoken with Carolyn in the meantime, I believe.
We've been trading voicemails, so we've, we've spoken to each other's machines. But the communications that we, uh, had indicate that there may be good reason to have a conversation before the council accepts this resignation.
Uh, so Joe Vili, I will make a motion to continue agenda item eight A to the next meeting.
Deb Kelso, second.
Motion from Joe, second from Deb. Any discussion? All right, anyone opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Eight B is a letter dated October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty from Andrew Gilmarten concerning operation of the Elite Indoor Gun Range. That has been received and placed on file. Uh, and I believe Andrew Gilmarten is in the audience. If we could bring him in. All right, Andrew, let's see that you have been brought into the meeting. If you would like us to see you, there you are. Um, welcome, uh, tell us about, uh. Your letter.
Sure. So it's, it's a rather technical question, but it has to do with the, um. The indoor gun range, um, special use permit that was, um, given in two thousand and fifteen. The. The range at Rose Hill Road, there is both a, um, skeet shooting range and there was an outside, uh, range, uh, for many, many years. And in two thousand and fifteen, the owner applied for an indoor use. And so my question to the town is. The grandfathering of the outside range is a different use code than the inside range. And so I'm trying to understand how the town approved, um. A special use permit which is prohibited in an R forty zone. For an indoor range to, um, the owner of this property. It's a technical question, but there are two different uses. They're in this and they have very different, um. Uh, stipulations associated with them. And so it's my reading of, of the. The zoning code is that the indoor range is prohibited and there is no facility that is legal facility for the town. To transfer an outside use to an inside use.
All right, thank you, Andrew. I'm going to let, uh, the lawyers, uh, talk about this because, uh, out of my. Expertise, uh, Mike.
Yeah, good evening, again, everyone, Mike Gerso. So in nineteen, in twenty fourteen, end of twenty fourteen, beginning of twenty fifteen, the town. Um, council adopted an extremely comprehensive, um, ordinance with regard to indoor shooting ranges and the licensing. Of indoor shooting ranges and the various steps that an individual would have to go through in order to accomplish, um, obtaining a license. Once they made it through, um, the zoning, um, I will tell you, it is, if not the most comprehensive. License procedure. It is one of the most comprehensive procedures in the state of Rhode Island with regard to the establishment. Of indoor light, um, ranges. I think the, the town was right to make sure that, um, this use would be well regulated. Um, among other things, it provides that the owner of the license has to come back to a public hearing. The town council on an annual basis for renewal and there are a whole number of stipulations that they have to comply with. And in fact. This occurred, I believe, at your last meeting when the annual license renewal, um, came up. So, um. In, in fact, it, it was, um, an allowable use. The special use permit was granted. And, you know, at this point, um, that it can't be rescinded. It, it runs with the land. We're obviously way beyond. Um, the time period for appeals to that, et cetera.
Could you be specific as to what, um, uh, part of the law in two thousand and fourteen made this, um, transfer possible?
Um, well, I, I'm not sure there was a transfer. It was the creation of, um, an indoor shooting range, actually.
And how come the, so the, the question is the zoning code is very clear and it's not, there's no amendments on the code itself. So, um, I just would like to understand it so I can, well, understand it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking through the, um. I, I'm looking through the ordinance now as, um, we're speaking.
While, while you do that, I can also, um, provide additional commentary to your, uh, town manager's comment earlier about the. The couple who was talking about the gun noise, um, there are literally hundreds of properties around the gun range. When the gun range probably started, um, you know, seventy years ago, it was all rural. Um, with subdivisions that have happened over the, over that time. It's now residential. Um, there's no question about it. And I believe that, um, the town really does need to address the noise issue. Uh, but right now, I'm specifically interested in, in whether the town overstepped their legal bounds, um, in two thousand and fifteen.
So a couple of observations, um, the complaints we receive, um. About the gun ranger are almost, in fact, I think they're exclusively about the outdoor, uh, noise. To the best of my knowledge, we do not receive complaints about noise emanating from the building.
That's true. It's, um, I've lived here twenty years. It's only in the last, um, eighteen months that it has become, uh, a vastly different problem.
Yeah, and it, it's the shotgun, um, you know.
There's a lot of powder in a shotgun.
Yeah, that's right. There's a lot of noise. I, 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 you know, I fully appreciate the, the fact that you guys are hearing this noise, uh, quite constantly.
Yeah, and I live a mile away.
Yeah, I hear it indoors in my house and I'm about a mile away.
So I don't want to waste the town council's time while the solicitor looks this up, um, but it, it would be good to get a, a real answer to the.
So I will, I will share one other observation, um, which dovetails off of the solicitor's point, and that is. Once an act has been taken, even if, if there is found to be a procedural error in how the government did it. If the procedure, um, has resulted in the acquisition of rights by, a property right by someone. We really need to look for a solution. Uh, the solution, if there's a technical problem with the way that the ordinance was, uh, created. By many councils ago now, uh, back in two thousand and fourteen or two thousand and fifteen. Then the remedy is going to be to cure the defect. Uh, there is an ordinance on how to do a indoor range. If the steps weren't pursued appropriately, we're going to go back and redo the steps. So for example, the remedy here might very likely be. to amend the zoning map. If the zoning map was never amended to allow for an indoor use, that's a curable defect. And the remedy there wouldn't be the secession of operations of the indoor range. It'd be to amend the map.
But it's curable for the business. It's not curable for the property owner around the business.
If the, if the indoor range isn't causing the problem, the noise problem, it's, that's.
It's a knock on effect, you know. So as you had mentioned earlier, they're better, they're better managed from a business perspective. And if the shooting range was distinct from the indoor range, but they're not, they're one unit. People go to the indoor range to get permission to use the outdoor shooting range, so.
I will also point out, even on the grandfathering approach to this problem, which I don't want to get too deep into because, you know, we're just sort of thinking about ways that this might have come about, and it's not always that useful to speculate. But there were two types of uses going on. There was solid projectile, a range for solid projectiles, and there was shotgun activity. The shotgun activity has been grandfathered outside, but because of concerns about solid projectiles traveling too far, you built a backstop against which they're going to be fired and four, three other walls around that. It really is a change in the way that use which existed previously is conducted. I do understand that it wouldn't have been allowed in 1972 when the zoning came in, but solid projectiles were being shot before 1972. So you're right, it's a very technical problem. It's not one that has a very clean solution as I sit here.
And this is Mike again, and I certainly will prepare a memo to the council, but back when we adopted the ordinance, we were of the opinion that there was not a zoning issue here because of the existence of the shooting range on the property. But we did a number of memos back in 14 and 15 regarding facts and questions and how it would work and how it would fit. I'm more than happy for the council to put together a summary of that and provide the backup so that you will have all this for your next meeting.
Thank you.
Before leaving this issue, I would just like to underscore that this is not the first time we're hearing noise complaints from this property. It's really become quite prominent.
Yeah, it's unfortunate. This used to be, you know, even with a, with a a transfer station and a quarry just around the corner. It's been a quiet neighborhood for the most part, for all these years, and now it's not. But thank you for your time. And I look forward to the, to reading the solicitor's memo.
Thank you, Andrew. Perhaps a motion to send this to the solicitor would be.
Deb Kelso, I'll make a motion to send the agenda item B8B to the solicitor's office.
Rory McIntyre, second to that motion.
A motion from Deb, a second from Rory. Is there any further discussion? Is there anyone opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you for coming to the meeting, Andrew. Have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thanks.
And that brings us to 8C, an email dated November 5th, 2020, from Edwin Staples concerning a proposed housing development in Matunik. This is received and placed on file. Is Mr. Staples here?
I do not see him.
To say we have received numerous communications on this proposed development project at Holden Road. Rob, do you want to just give a brief rundown? It's before the planning board.
It is before the planning board, and the planning board is actively reviewing the application. They had a special meeting last week where this was the only item on the agenda. They got to the end of the time period in which the planning board had agreed to end the hearing, and they ended the hearing, they continued the hearing. I do not have the date for which the continuation was set. If you want to just check with Jamie Rabbit, Jamie will probably have that date, and it may be helpful to the public if we can bring him in and have him report that date. Right there. Hey, Jamie. So when, when was the hearing continued to?
You're currently muted, Jamie.
Still muted, Jamie.
Sorry, I had, screen was reduced and there was a block over the unmute, so I couldn't do that. Rob, if you can just give me a second, I'm going through the meeting, draft meeting minutes to get to that exact.
So if you'll do me a favor and email that to me, I'll report it to the council.
I will do that. But it was continued, the meeting, the commission took testimony to just after 11:00 PM, a week ago. So some 102 to 103 attendees to the Zoom public hearing.
And thank you, Jamie and Rob. Mike, just, you know, I think you know, the public is often confused about, you know, whether, if the issue is being considered by the town, who is it before? We will often hear calls for us to take action as town council on a matter that's before the planning board. You had just discussed that, you know, that's not allowed. That might be good for people to hear.
Yeah, sure. So we have a system set up whereby there's jurisdiction that's granted to various boards, whether it be planning or zoning. The jurisdiction for the council is really legislative. And when something is being considered before one of those other boards, it, any solicitor is going to advise the council that they really can't speak to that issue during those proceedings because of the whole idea of undue influence by you as the sitting council actually appoint members to those boards. So you don't want to find yourself in a conflict situation or an advocacy position. There is an exception to that when a council member may be personally affected based upon where their land is located. And then we get an opinion from the ethics commission that allows you to get involved. But under, except for that very narrow exception, because you are the appointing authority, when there is something that's in, within the ambient or jurisdiction of one of those other boards, the council is actually prohibited by law from getting involved.
Thank you, Mike. All right. Do I hear a motion on 8C?
Oh, it's Deb Kelso. I'll make a motion that we refer item 8C to the planning board.
Rory McIntyre, second to that.
We have a motion from Deb, second from Rory. Any further discussion? Is there anyone opposed? I could, that motion carries unanimously.
Abel, it's Mike, so can I interrupt one more time? I just want to get on the record, and I'm sorry I couldn't find it as quickly with regard to the shooting range. And I will give you a memo on this, but I just want to let you now all know that the council on March 9th, 2015, adopted an amendment to the zoning ordinance which did permit shooting range, indoor shooting ranges to exist. So again, you get all that in writing from me, but I did want to at least make it part of tonight's record that there is no zoning violation. There is a zoning amendment that does in fact allow for it.
Thank you very much. Okay, that brings us to 8E, an email dated November 9th, 2020, from Doug Gilbert. And an email dated November 16th, 2020, from the South County Trail Homeowners Association concerning the status of Michaela Court. Is there someone here to talk about this item? So please raise your hand. All right, Doug is here. Could we bring him in? All right, Doug, you are in the meeting. You can unmute yourself by clicking that little microphone. There you are. Welcome.
Hello. I am waiting for Tony, who's my compatriot on the association, to join in as well. He should be on in one second.
Yeah, I see he just raised his hand. Bring Tony in as well. While we're waiting for that to happen, you may have heard Rob speak briefly about the issue in the work session. I don't know if you were on at that point.
I missed half of it, but what did he say, if you don't mind?
I said, you said. I just reported the substance of our conversation.
But also you had spoken with Alex Petrucci. Okay, so that was a conversation with you. Okay.
Well, are we at it again? But essentially, I just wanted to put it on record that, and Tony's on right now. Tony, do you mind just memorializing your conversation? And then I'll just put my tidbit in at the end.
Sure, there was an interview about who would be handling the plowing this coming winter. I spoke with Alex Petrucci on two occasions, November 19th, and then I followed up with him on November 14th. I'm sorry. Sorry, the first conversation was November 14th, and I followed up with him November 19th. I asked on the 19th if there were any updates on the road. He told me that his son-in-law, Peter Scaffington, who was the contractor for the development, he said that Peter would be contacting the town to find out what was the status of the town taking over the road. On the 19th, Alex informed me that Peter is filing the necessary paperwork to have the town take over the road and that there are a couple of items still left on the town's punch list that need to be addressed. He wasn't exactly sure what the items were, but he thinks there's something to do with engineering. I told him that we needed assurance that our road would be plowed this winter. He told me that his son-in-law, Peter, would handle the plowing until the town takes over the road. Doug, you want to follow up on that?
Perfect. Thank you, Tony. So, yeah, so obviously I had a lot of points in the letter that I had sent. I've had a few different email correspondence with the Mr. Zarnitsky, as well as the town council outlining some of our concerns. Some of our concerns have been addressed. But, you know, I'd say we have to live with the, we are comfortable and we're accepting of the developers taking on the responsibility to, to hopefully take care of the plowing this upcoming winter. As we know, it will probably be very difficult to try to correct any outstanding deficiencies or maybe with the road, but our expectation would be that between next spring and summer, that since it was the original plan for this to become a town road, that the, between the developer and the town that we work towards, the application process of this be, you know, being proposed to be a town road. So I just wanted to really put everything on the record as far as that's concerned. And make sure that the town's going to step, if, if the, if nothing gets done as far as the outstanding, there is a bond outstanding as far as the, the development's concerned, that if, that if the steps aren't taken, that's necessary to make sure that it does need to become a town road, that the town steps up and takes the necessary actions to make sure that, that, that the homeowners and the development are protected. That's all I'm asking.
So I will explain to the council and the public that this is a bit of a tricky problem because the town, when it agrees to accept a road, is agreeing to take property if offered to us. Right now, the land under Michaela Court is owned by a private party. We don't take private roads. We are given private roads. Our agreement when, when this project was proposed was that we would accept if it was offered. It has not been offered. So we're in a, in a situation where we can't do anything about it because it's simply not been offered. Now, our agreement to accept is also based on conditions. We agree to accept the road and the land if the pavement is the appropriate thickness, the drainage is appropriately done, all of the conditions that we would put on a construction if it were a road being built by the town. So those conditions have not yet been met in this case. And when those conditions are met, then the offer has to be made by the private party, and we will accept. We're in sort of a tricky place because we can't accept that which has not been offered.
Understood. All right.
Yeah, our plan is that in the spring or summer that it will be offered and that that if the, if it can't be offered because the remedies have not been done, that the necessary actions are taken on behalf of the town to make sure that it can be offered.
We will do what we can, and we look forward to accepting your road. All right, in the meantime, thanks for coming tonight and explaining your issue.
Thank you.
Do I hear a motion? Eight E.
I'll make a motion, this is Brian with 8E, to refer it back to the manager's office to keep an eye on it for next spring, summer, and advise the council at that point.
Rory McIntyre, second to the motion.
Motion from Brian, second from Rory. Is there any discussion? Is there anyone opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Doug and Tony, have a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you again. Item 8H is an email dated November 16th, 2020, from Doral Beasley concerning RGB architects and the school facilities, stage two application to ride has been received and placed on file. Leave, I saw Doral's name here earlier. Let's see. Oh, there he is. Oh, he's brought it.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Doral.
Okay. So I said that because I'm very concerned about where we are right now. To me, it looks like it's going as the time's going to run out. And here comes February, and the stage two is currently written, will be what they have up there, and they'll look at it, and then they'll probably accept it. And then we'll be stuck. Because when I, when I listen to building committee meetings, when people will say, well, in stage three, we can make changes. That's true, but you can't make, you can't make changes. You can't make the changes that need to be made now. This is actually, the way I look at this stage two application, this is actually the third iteration. We started with option B, which the prior school committee chose. And then this school committee was elected. They reversed the decision to close Wakefield using a demographic report by McKibben, which was, it was created with, must have been created with a Ouija board. Now, so then that they last year, May, May 2019, we did a cursory determination whether we can move this high school to Curtis Corner. That one was knocked off its foundation almost from the beginning, from where they put the building way back into the property, which then required, you know, extensive excavation, worries about ledge, getting the sewage connection, all the rest of it. So we've, so the new superintendent. So we've, so the new superintendent comes in. And they do a new visioning process. So they, so you took the visioning process that the community did back in the last quarter 2017, by three months worth of visioning. And they threw that up, they threw that out and replace it with a handpicked group of people, which I think it took about a month, maybe. If that, now they have new visioning to fit their new proposal. Now, the proposal to build half a new school at Curtis Corner and do what they can with the rest of it is just awful. On top of that, you have Broad Rock, Broad Rock. If you looked at the McKibben, if you looked at the, actually, I just sent you guys a couple of minutes ago, Mr. Zarnetsky has a new chart. New demographic chart in his computer, if you wanted to bring it up. It shows the latest McKibben reports. And versus the NASDAQ, the ones that came out this month. And what, what they show is, but the end of this decade, there's a divergence by 300 students. The NASDAQ report has 300 fewer students than the 2,100 students in South Kingstown schools. So that means if that comes to fruition, that means over the last 30 years, we've lost 50% of our kids in our schools. I know, I know it hasn't been a priority for this town council. They certainly hope it's a priority for the next town council to find out why this is happening here. It's not happening in Barrington and it's not happening in East Greenwich. Their enrollments projected to the end of this decade are going up. If, if I've lived here all my life. I don't, you know, to have half the kids in our schools that we had 30 years ago, that's unacceptable. How can, how can anyone think that's acceptable? And the reason it's, there's a couple of reasons for it. Number one, goes back into the seventies and what we did with our zoning. And we made the land more, more expensive. And
Doral, yes.
Okay, I got, okay, okay. But the thing is, it boils down to this. We could build a new school. We could build a brand new high school at Curtis Corner, except the school district. The school district doesn't want to, doesn't want to pitch in and do, give us any kind, any, any relief from their bloated budget. We have over, we have Barrington has eight students for every employee. With, with the latest numbers that the superintendent put out last week, we're below six. That number in South Kingstown is below six. That's over 100 people. If we had, if we had eight to one in South Kingstown, we'd have about 350 people working in our district, not 460. Thank you, Doral. No, I'm not done. But when, when you look at the outcomes, if you would take a look at the outcomes in our schools, our school rankings by the STAR reports, our, our students, our students' numbers on, on the, on the ELA and the math scores from grade three all the way till the SAT level and grade 11, they're all substandard. They're all below, in many cases, the state average. But we're spending $25,000 a student. But you just sit there, you sit there and every year come April, you approve their budgets. And last year, when you had the opportunity to finally using that, using that that law that's been on the books for over 20 years, you whiffed. In the middle of a pandemic, you said, no, we're just going to keep it the way it is. Mr. Zarnetsky, could you show that? I just liked to go over it for like, not even a minute. It's up to you guys. I don't care.
It's the council's meeting. If you want to see the graphic, I'm happy to pull it up.
I mean, I presume we'll all have in our email when we have a chance to look at that.
Yeah, but the public won't have a chance to look at it.
If you think it'll take a minute, Doral.
Yes, not even that. All right. So what, what you see there is the gray line, the gray line coming down from the upper left, that's South Kingstown's student population starting back in 2019, 1999, 2000, and it goes out to the end of this decade. So when you see down there, get over to the, the right side of the, of the graph, you'll see that the dotted line, the red dotted line, that's the latest McKibben report. And then the, the gray line going down to the bottom where it says 2172, that's the latest NASDAQ report. Now NASDAQ by and large through this whole process, since I started getting involved with it, when it went back to maybe the mid 2000s, has been way closer than any McKibben report. If you look at that yellow line, the yellow line where it starts at 2959, it goes to 299047. That's a report that, that McKibben put out in April of 2019 to valid, to validate the fact that they kept Wakefield School open. That, that whole, every, every number on that, on that report was garbage. Now, I don't trust McKibben. How can, how can you trust somebody who seems to be making demographic reports to fit what somebody in his town is telling him that they want or, or the, or RGB or legacy, whoever it is. It's like you tell them what they want and they make it for you. I don't trust them. I don't trust RGB. And I can never, I will never support this RGB going forward. If they're, if they're part of this and, and we don't make a change to build a new high school, I could, I could never support this project. It's a waste, it's a waste of $85 million. We'd be better off like, like Roland Benjamin said to me, we'd be better off doing nothing.
Very good. All right. Thank you, Doral. Look forward to continuing to hear from you. Do I hear a motion on eight H? Perhaps.
Make a motion to place eight H on file.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Right. Motion from Rory, second from Deb. Any further discussion?
So maybe we can add to that motion that we also forward the email to the school building committee.
Rory.
Yeah, I'll amend my original motion to add that it should be forwarded to the school building committee. Also add to amend the original motion to have it forwarded to the newly elected school committee as well.
Second from Deb. Motion for a second from Deb. Further discussion? Is there anyone opposed? That motion carries unanimously. And that brings us to item. Both communications and comments from interested citizens are marked eight on my agenda. So I think this is actually number nine. Comments from interested citizens. Is that right? We'll just go with it. At this point, if you are watching, you'd like to make a comment, please raise your hand or if you're on your phone, you can hit star nine to raise your hand. We'll call on folks in the order in which they raise their hands. And I don't see anyone jumping to speak right at the moment. Are there any comments from council members?
I just have a comment. It's Bryant and Joe's last meeting with us, so I would just like to say good luck and we'll, we'll miss you. We'll see you at the grocery store, I guess.
We'll see Joe at all the ribbon cuttings. Maybe Brian will be to.
I just had something I wanted to say really quick. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve the citizens of the town of South Kingstown. You know, I wish the new council the best and if there's anything I can ever do to help, you guys know how to reach me. And I hope everyone has a safe and warm, happy Thanksgiving.
Able, Joe Vili, just a couple of comments. One, the first thing has to do with tonight's meeting. So Abel, you pulled off four public hearings in under 30 minutes, never in six years. So thank you. One of, one of the reasons I made the decision not to run this year is I think that a major issue for me, and it's not just at the local, it's at the state, national level as well, is that I think term limits are something that is really lacking in our system. And so in 2014, I sort of set them for me. So I wanted to give thanks to the staff. I did not really have an occasion to reach out to them often, but when I did, the response was quick and efficient and friendly. And I think this town is, is very lucky to have the staff that we have in our town hall and all our departments, highway, public services and, you know, the police department, anywhere I've reached out to, the response has always been, you know, the solicitor's office, the manager's office, always been prompt, courteous and, you know, as it should be, what I, what I would expect, but I pleasantly found that to be the case. I've been coming to these meetings for a lot of years before I got on council. I don't expect that that behavior will change. You folks can expect to see me at budget time. As I pointed out to somebody the other day, I may, by changing sides of the table, I may have lost a vote, but I haven't lost a voice. So you can expect to hear from me and I know I'll be welcomed. And I wanted to give a thank you to the residents of South Kingstown that have supported me over these three terms. I really appreciate the faith that you had put in me. It has been an absolute pleasure and an honor to serve and I recommend this to, this is an experience that I think I pointed out to somebody in my first term. At the end of the, the first year, I think Steve Alfred said, so to the whole council, so what do you think you folks have learned? And I said, and another council was, was a little bit surprised to learn this. I learned some things that I thought I already knew. So I've been coming to these meetings since probably the late seventies, on and off. Obviously I had busy times in my life where I wasn't as plugged in. But I learned some things on this side of the table that I thought I already knew and it's an experience that I don't think I would trade. I recommend it to anybody who anybody who has the least bit of ambition to try something like this. But you have to have, you know, a thick skin and you have to have a strong tongue because you bite it a lot and, but I, I've really enjoyed it and it's been an honor. So thank you, everyone. And I think I counted 14 counselors that I've served with and each relationship has been a good one. So I thank you all.
And yes, thank you both Bryant and Joe. I think those were really heartfelt and meaningful words there. And it has been a pleasure to serve alongside both of you over the years. Thank you for all your service. And I look forward to, of course, seeing you around town. This is Rhode Island and this is South Kingstown. So we will not be strangers. You've, you've both added a lot to the discourse and, you know, I've had the pleasure of working with you for all those six years, Joe and Bryant, with your four years on the council and it's been, I think we've, we've done some good things for the town and I'm proud of the work that, you know, we've both done together. One other comment, you know, aside from that, I did just want to remark, you know, we, we had Veterans Day here and we gathered, it was a crab. Not a dangerous crab, very socially distanced. But it was really meaningful to me to be out there on Veterans Day this year. I had some remarks about how this is marked the 75th anniversary of the end of the Second World War. And, you know, slowly, sadly, but surely we're, we're losing that greatest generation that, that fought that war on our behalf and on the world's behalf. And, you know, it occurred to me that in fighting COVID-19, which is the battle of our times right now, we're really working our hardest to, to save what's left of that generation. And looking ahead now to Thanksgiving in a couple of days with the growth of, of the pandemic that we've seen around the country and here in Rhode Island. I just want to ask everybody to be safe this holiday season. You know, I know Thanksgiving is, is my favorite holiday because I get to usually gather with a very large extended family. That is not something I'll be doing this year and I, I think we should all be careful to protect our elders and with that, I will say happy Thanksgiving to everybody. I hope you enjoy it safely and we'll see you at the next meeting. We'll stay from sound. Thank you, Abel. Any further comments?
I have one further comment that was an email sent to me directly or a message from a constituent slash out of town person. And I guess their concern, I just wanted to bring it to the council's attention is, you know, when you own property in our town and you're here often, you know, maybe you're here four months, five months, six months out of the year. But you're in the process of potentially still finishing out employment elsewhere. So you might have New York plates that, I know that COVID's a crazy time, but I think we, as humans, you know, I might've been out of fear that people would say stuff to people that had New York plates or New Jersey plates or Connecticut plates. But I do think as a town, as a whole, that's not who we are. And I just hope that people can keep their eyes, minds and hearts open to know that everyone's going through the struggle with COVID and to be accepting and just to make sure that everyone is protecting each other, you know? We definitely don't want people not practicing safe social distancing. You know, we want people wearing masks, in my opinion. COVID's getting a lot worse right now for everywhere pretty much and, and even in our town. And as humans, as citizens, as brothers and sisters and family and friends, we owe it to everyone to make sure that we do whatever we can to protect each other. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. All right. I think with that, we can move on to item 10, the town managers.
All right. I'll keep tonight's report short. I'll start by just updating the council on where we are with COVID cases among the town workforce. We have seen an uptick. We really had no, we had one early positive in town during the initial COVID surge in the spring. But really nothing through the summer. And we now are seeing some positive tests and some presumptive cases among town employees. The numbers are still not crazy. As of today, we have four positives. We've got about a dozen people who are not on the job. We've got about a dozen people who are not on the job. Some of those folks are still working from home in isolation, but it is definitely beginning to show up in the workforce in a way that it has not previously. Really, since September, we've seen our employees being exposed in ways that they had not during the summer and the spring. So it is it is real, it is home, hitting home, and we're doing everything we can to try to keep folks safe. And I know it's been said here tonight, I know it's been said a lot in the media, but Thanksgiving is really going to be a test for us in South Kingstown, in Rhode Island, and across the country. Folks, even if even if you're going to visit relatives, try, do do whatever you can to keep yourself and your family safe, because we know that it's the casual contacts among family members and among friends that has been the base spread over the last several months. This is Thanksgiving is a made for COVID event, and we really, we need to be very careful over the next few days. I will say that now that we're beyond the election, we are starting to see some movement on budget in Providence. We are hoping to get some clarity on car taxes. I know that folks still occasionally are sending emails into the tax collector. We received one today saying, you know, I haven't seen my tax bill yet. Car tax bills have not gone out yet because we are waiting for the state to set the car tax rate for us, and as soon as that happens, we will start working on getting those tax, car tax bills out. State revenues are looking better for the state. There is some indication at this point that we may see some contribution from the state from the CARES Act up to this point. Municipalities, other than school districts, municipalities have not received any of those funds, and there's some indications at this point that we may start to see some COVID relief funds coming for municipal activities. We've been very careful about not spending money that we don't have. So our request for funds at this point to the state is not extraordinarily high. We've done without, I know that, you know, we did have a positive test in town hall, an employee who works in town hall did have a positive test. We went in and did the cleaning ourselves. We have a disinfecting machine that we've purchased, and we use on a regular basis. We're using it, you know, every day in all of our buildings. We didn't hire a firm to come in and do the cleaning, and it's cheaper for us to do things the way that we're doing them for cleanup, and it's, you know, it's it's cost effective. We have been very careful with overtime. We've not done overtime where we can avoid it. We were very quick to move one of the places where we have seen for South Kingstown standards a significant increase. We've spent about twenty-five thousand dollars on new computer equipment because we knew early in the COVID incident that we were going to need to have people working from home. So we did buy the equipment, and we've had productivity stay fairly high because of it. We've not had situations where we've had folks out on unemployment, collecting unemployment, and not working. We've had folks at home being productive and getting getting the the work done. So all in all, COVID is, it's on the rise, but it's not, it's not at this point destabilizing or preventing us from getting town business done. And the budget seems to be beginning to flow in a better direction for municipalities, including South Kingstown. And actually, I am going to leave the manager's report at that unless there are any questions from council members.
Rob, just for the public, I think either you or Susan, if you could just let people know where we stand in terms of certification and swearing in of the new council.
Sure. So Susan can correct me if I get any part of this wrong. There was a recount in our local election. The results of that recount have been certified by the state. The state will certify all election results for the state of Rhode Island on November thirtieth, which frees the local canvassing board to certify our races the next day, which will be December first. The charter requires that the council be sworn in, not the not the school committee, but the council be sworn in on the first Monday following certification, which would be December seventh. And it is required by charter that that be at eight P M. And you can't change it. It's eight o'clock in the evening on the first Monday after certification. We anticipate certification by the canvassing board on November first. So December seventh at eight P M. Now, while we're on this subject, I will note that there is no requirement in the charter that it be in person or that it be virtual. We will send a note out to the new council members tomorrow asking, you know, whether anyone has a preference for it being in person or whether a virtual swearing in makes sense. Traditionally, the school committee has been invited to be sworn in at the same time as the town council. And we cannot do that sort of event, an in-person town council plus school committee, because it exceeds the ten-person limit on indoor gatherings. So we'd have to figure out how to do a hybrid if the council wants to be in person in council chambers. Really, you know, from my perspective, just my perspective for what it's worth, you're going to have a historic town council photo taken one way or the other. You're either going to be standing in front of the dais with masks on, six feet apart, with six feet between you, or you're going to be the first town council to ever be have an official swearing in photograph on little boxes on a screen. Either way, it's going to be a historic photograph, and it's really going to be up to the council to tell us whether you want to do it virtually or you want to do it in person. Again, I'm not asking you to make a call here, but we are scheduling, and we will be asking for a scheduling preference location schedule preference tomorrow. Mike, any any thoughts or advice on how we poll the council on location?
So you're right, Rob, you can just send out a letter, and as long as they respond directly to you, and not all, they can each individually tell you, and then you can tally it up. What I just wanted to add is that if you decide to go the route of virtual swearing in, that is perfectly legal, and it's in fact being done in several other communities that I am aware of. So if there is a, you know, normally when you're in person, your 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 family members are with you, etc., none of that will be possible, obviously. So if you want to do it virtually, you absolutely can. There are no legal impediments.
So again, we'll we'll send out a quest for personal preferences by each member. And I'd ask that because it's not noticed that we just make it be that. I'll hold the secret ballot on that. The other point, you know, that I do want to underscore is Mike's. If we were to do it in council chambers, it will be the five council members, Susan. I have to be at council meetings by charter and unless excused, and Mike would be there. So we've we've already at that point got five, six, seven, eight. We'd have room for two more.
Need the photographer.
We have room for one more.
We can think about that tomorrow. All right. Any other questions for Rob? Very good. Thank you for that report. That brings us to eleven appointments.
Joe Vili, I'll make a resolution to reappoint Christie Swaret to the Housing Authority for a five-year term.
This is Bryant. I'll second that motion.
Second from motion from Joe, second from Bryant. Any discussion? Anyone opposed? That motion carries unanimously. And we did interview for the school trust fund.
Yep, Joe Vili, I'll make a resolution to appoint James Lathrop to the trustees of South Kingstown School Funds.
This is Bryant. I'll second that motion.
Motion from Joe, second from Bryant. Any discussion? Is there anyone opposed to this motion? All right, that motion carries unanimously. And I think that brings us to the end of appointments.
Excuse me, Abel. May I ask which of the terms do you want Mr. Lathrop to serve? One term expires in June twenty twenty-two, and the other expires June twenty twenty-five.
It's a long term.
So it was my motion, so I would say the twenty twenty-five.
Thank you.
All right. Very good. That brings us to twelve. Twelve C is a resolution establishing a waste oil and oil filter recycling charge between seven and ten dollars per disposal with the disposal rate to be determined by the Public Services Director and amending the town's schedule of fees. Said disposal rate is subject to the following disposal conditions. One, the fee is a flat fee for up to, but no greater than five gallons of waste oil and four oil filters. Two, limited to residents of South Kingstown and Narragansett only. And three, no commercial waste oil or oil filters. And to further described in a memo from the Public Services Director to the Town Manager dated November tenth.
So also, I'll make a motion that we approve item. Where are we now? Twelve, twelve C.
Joe Vili, I'll second with a question. So I don't know if this is for John or Rob. So what's the thinking behind limiting or eliminating, I should say, commercial?
Yeah, that is a question John's going to have to answer for you.
So I can answer that, Joe. It's strictly a matter of volume. We just, we would not be able to keep up with the volume from commercial. We're tapped out right now with residential. I mean, if that changes it, and we can accommodate in the future, we can certainly come back and yeah, amended.
And I know most commercial businesses that have the waste oil have made it arrangements for, you know, to they pay to dispose. But I just wondered why it was eliminated. No, that's, thank you.
And some commercial also have waste oil furnaces too.
Furnaces, right.
So it's strictly a volume issue. We wouldn't be able to accommodate that that additional volume.
Thank you.
Further discussion? All right, do I see anyone opposed to this motion? Very good. That motion carries unanimously, and that brings us to twelve D, a resolution authorizing an award of bid to Central Chrysler Jeep Dodge of Rainham. One ninety-one New State Highway, Rainham, Massachusetts, for a twenty twenty-one Chrysler thirty-five hundred Ram tradesman pickup truck with snowplow in an amount not to exceed thirty-two thousand six hundred and eighty-eight dollars, including trade-in, and further described in a memo from the Public Services Director to the Town Manager dated November eighteen. Play here a motion.
Joe Vili, a motion to approve twelve D.
Bryant, I'll second that motion.
Joe, second from Bryant. Any discussion? Anyone opposed? That motion carries unanimously, brings us to twelve E, resolution authorizing the town manager to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Aviv Solutions for the implementation and management of an AED program called the Four Minute City with the goal of decreasing the time to defibrillation for a patient suspected of being in a cardiac arrest. Further described in a memo from the Emergency Director of Emergency Medical Services to the Town Manager, November eighteen.
MacIntyre, I'll make a motion to approve twelve E.
Deb Kelso, second.
Motion from Rory, second from Deb. Discussion questions on this one? Sort of an interesting program, Rob. Do you want to talk about it just for a brief minute?
It really is an interesting program, and we owe gratitude to Craig Stanley for bringing the firm to us. This is a firm out of California that has developed a smartphone-type defibrillator. It's a little bit bigger than a smartphone, but it's still a very portable, compact device. It's got a user-friendly interface, a smart screen, rather than sort of just coming on a piece of equipment that has paddles that you have to figure out what to do with. It's a far less intimidating. In fact, it's got a smile in one iteration as you come to the device to to sort of make it a human interface. And the device is internet-connected, sits on a wall, and when someone has an incident, someone goes down for a cardiac event with a cardiac event, the dispatch folks can send a signal to the devices in the vicinity. The devices will let out an audio signal. Anyone who hears that signal goes to the device and sees a map flashing that says, someone is down. Take me to this person, and you take the device to where the cardiac incident is happening. The paddles, again, are not these intimidating paddles, but very small, you know, stick-on type things. And you can follow the instructions on that smart screen rather than trying to figure out what's going on. They've really tried to design a user-friendly device that isn't intimidating. They've got a plan to distribute them very widely throughout communities because they're low-cost devices, and they're trying to get the defibrillation rate within four minutes, which is the timeframe that matters down across the country. This is a device that is currently under review with the Federal Drug Administration. They need to prove it for efficacy and safety. And the company is hoping that as soon as they're through that FDA approval process, they can go through a proof of concept in the field in twenty communities across the country. We are one of the twenty places where they want to test this. So we would be leading edge in terms of applying a new technology that is not just medical, but really sort of a high-tech device as well. Really neat, doesn't cost us anything, and if it goes well, may save lives. No, just for the record, we are not replacing any of the other defibrillators. We will keep all of the defibrillators that we've deployed in town buildings in place. These are augmentations, not replacements.
Great. Well, thank you, Rob, and thank you, Craig. You have a motion in a second. Is there anyone opposed? Good. That motion carries unanimously. And that brings us to twelve F, resolution authorizing the purchase of OCV LLC slash OCV Apps of Alabama of a mobile application, smartphone app, to provide town information and offer resources to the public. Further described in a memo from the Town Manager to the Town Council dated November eight.
So this is another high-tech innovation. You know, everybody has now got a smartphone. At least ninety-six percent of the population has got a smartphone. And we don't currently have a great interface between town government and smartphones. So this tool is a tool that will provide a notification to people who've downloaded the app. They'll download an application specific to South Kingstown from the Apple Store or the Google Store. And once you've downloaded that app, you'll receive notifications just as you do from news services. So if we, you know, post a meeting or we do something interesting, that's a newsflash kind of thing, the notification will ping on your smartphone as if it were from CNN or from any other news source. It'll be from South Kingstown, very apparently so, but it'll it'll be a notification like any other. That's a good feature about this. We just are sort of plugged into a community in a different way. The more interesting thing The more interesting thing from my perspective is the application on the producer side, on the publishing side. Will allow us to publish to one place, from one place to many different channels. Right now, if we want to update. A news flash or a press release, we have to update it on our webpage, then we have to go to Facebook. If we're gonna do it on Twitter, which we do have a Twitter account that we don't use because it's too cumbersome, we'd have to go to Twitter and post it there as well. This tool will allow us to publish from one screen and go to all of those different channels all at once. We can control that so that some, you know, some departments are sending perhaps to Facebook, but not to the webpage, et cetera, et cetera. We can really customize it, it becomes a much easier way to manage our communications to the public. So again, another high-tech solution to a problem because the technology is evolving faster than government.
Rob? All right, do I hear a motion on 12F?
Rory McEntee, I'll make a motion to approve 12F.
Deb Kelso, second.
From Rory, second from Deb, any discussion? Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimously, and that brings us to 12G. A resolution to accept, reject, or amend a proposal by Hang 10 LLC of 932 Mattoonik Beach Road in Wakefield. To purchase the so-called Mary Carpenter lots in Mattoonik, identified as plat 92-2 lot 47 and plat 92-3 lot 1. For the bid amount of $95,000 in accordance with requirements as outlined in a memo from the Town Manager to the Town Council dated November 19, 2020.
So this is a longstanding project and Susan, while, while I'm talking, I see that Kevin Finnegan and his attorney, Bill Landry are in the audience. They may wish to come in, it's the council's meeting, but it may be beneficial to have them in.
We can bring them in now, sure. They've waited around this long.
So this is a longstanding project, it's a project that really began with the, the town of South Kingstown acquiring two parcels of land. Between the Mattoonik Trailer Association and the Ocean Mist. The town purchased these properties with federal highway monies. I want to say back in, well, John, you've got the date specific, back in 2015 or 16, I would, I think. They were purchased for the purpose of putting in a seawall to protect the Mattoonik Beach Road. After the acquisition of the properties, the town proceeded to put in the first phase, the first part of a seawall. Adjacent to the road or just to the seaward side of the road. And this parcel has not been disposed of in part because the town still needs to complete the seawall further to the west. So we actually had a item on the bond referendum to deal with this second phase of the project. We've been seeking federal funds, we've been seeking grant funds for a number of years. And we've just not had a lot of success in getting federal funds. Now currently, we have. A pre-application for FEMA funds through the Rhode Island Emergency Management Agency that has been approved. Now, what that means is the federal government has told REMA. That the type of application that we've described fits the criteria and would be reviewed. If we were to submit a full application to FEMA or through REMA to FEMA. We've asked very pointed questions of REMA to find out what that would entail. If we were going to use only federal funds, now I should be careful there. If we were going to apply for the grant and use only these grant funds plus our match, there's a 20% match to that, that grant. We anticipate the construction would not be completed until 2023. We would not be able to have the project completed until 2023. Both the Director of Public Services and I are worried about waiting that long because every hurricane season. That we're without the, the safety of a seawall, the road is in jeopardy and the neighborhood that is serviced by the road is in jeopardy. That having said, this is an expensive project, we're going, going to spend probably $3 million, close to it. On this project and it would be nice to have federal funds to do it. We've got to make a decision about whether or not to make a formal and complete application to FEMA for this grant that they've at least told us were eligible to apply for. Soon, we've got to make that decision within the next few weeks. Now. Being eligible to apply doesn't mean that we would be the, the best applicant and that we'd be guaranteed funding. So we could put the application in and find a year from now that we didn't receive federal funding or that we didn't receive sufficient federal funding. To really have made the risk that we've taken by not getting the work done sooner done. It may not, may not have been the right decision if we wait and see what FEMA is willing to send our way. We would like to get this project done, we have the bond funding to get this project done, it's just a big price tag. Now, in the course of a number of conversations with the adjoining property owner, Mr. Finnegan. He's indicated that he also wants to see this thing done as quickly as possible. It's no one's interest to leave our property, in the town's case, the road or his property. In his case, the Ocean Mist to the east of, of this location, exposed for hurricane season. We've been lucky, but you can't, luck is not a, is not a strategy. And we really all would like to see this get done as quickly as possible. I understand that Mr. Finnegan, for a number of years, has expressed that he would be willing to contribute. To the purchase of sheet pile for the completion of the wall that the town maintains is necessary to secure the road. And then he wants to proceed and build a. Rebuild a stone block historic wall. Now, part of his objective here is to create a space that the public could access. We don't have that same expectation in our future ownership, we're not, we're not proposing, the town doesn't have the resources and is not proposing. To reconstruct the historic wall. So the idea of a pedestrian-friendly, fisherman-friendly, flat surface on which people could walk. And from which people could fish is not something that the town is, is going to be able to do on its own. Mr. Finnegan brings to the table the prospect of an augmented location along the shoreline. And I will say, one of the things that, that we've been very careful about in our discussions over the years, the town has been careful about. Is making sure, and Mr. Finnegan's supported this, this proposition, making sure that we're not cutting off public access to the water, to the ocean. The property that we're considering here can be thought of as sort of a square donut. There is a public right-of-way all the way around the property. What Mr. Finnegan is proposing to do is to fill in that donut hole with a pedestrian-friendly surface and a pedestrian-friendly environment. So we would maintain public access to the water in the periphery of the property. And he would augment the usefulness, the public's usefulness, and perhaps commercial usefulness, I'll let him speak to that. But the usefulness and utility of the property that is the center of that location. All of this requires two big projects, it requires us to drive sheet metal closer to the road. And requires him to lay block, large block toward the seaward side of, of the properties. That's a summary and I'll shut up and let others speak.
Thank you, Rob. At this point. The, the decision before us tonight, just to reiterate, is to whether to accept this sales agreement, correct?
So, yes, where we are is actually, we've had a, a proposal submitted, we'd be accepting the proposal. Now, we can accept a proposal with conditions, we can accept a proposal with no conditions, or we can reject a proposal. Our recommendation would be that we accept a proposal with conditions. And those conditions are really still up in the air, to be honest with you. The baseline condition that I don't think is, is. That, that staff would like not to have changed is we need to get our sheet metal in as soon as possible. We can't have conditions that would prevent us from getting sheet metal and that sheet metal wall in the ground and protecting Mattoonik Beach Road. If Mr. Finnegan's willingness to participate is such that he'd be willing to contribute to the construction, we'd forego, we would not, we're, we're done with the question of whether to apply for a FEMA grant at that point. At that point, the best course of action from our, from the staff perspective is proceed with all due diligence, accept graciously the, the offer of participation being made. And move on, then the question is simply one of timing. How do we make sure that we are proceeding as we need to, as quickly as we can with a sheet wall? And also ensuring that Mr. Finnegan can begin to proceed as quickly as he can. We don't want to be tripping over each other on the, on the job site, but we do want to make sure that we are coordinating schedules. So there's a coordination of schedules condition that needs to be, at least in theory, laid out here tonight.
Okay. So we can discuss what that looks like. I, I think. You know, the recommendation is probably right, not to wait until 2023 for potential federal grant funding. Hopefully, you know, there's some miracle where there's some stimulus money put into infrastructure in the coming administration. That goes to shovel-ready projects and we have this one sitting there waiting for them and maybe we can grab money that way. But I think, yeah, we have been lucky to this point, we can't count on that continuing. Kevin or Mr. Landry? Do you have any thoughts right here at the outset?
This is Bill Landry speaking, thanks, thanks for the opportunity to. To, to participate in this meeting that. I, I, I know that probably maybe none of the council members were on the council at the time this all started, but we worked with the town, the town and Mr. Finnegan's company. Were co-applicants for the ascent, for the reconstruction of the Mary Carpenter seawall. It was always intended to be a partnership, the seawall to be complementary. To the town's sheet pile wall. If for some reason the town was never able to get the funding to complete the sheet pile wall. The seawall itself would clearly have a very positive influence. A public access has always been a feature of this, our joint CRMC approval requires there to be a walking. Promenade on the top of the seawall, a ladder coming down. As the Town Manager mentioned, easements, right-of-ways, all around, it'll be a, it'll be a, a real landmark location. We have always, Mr. Finnegan has always intended to proceed with the construction of the seawall, it's about a two, two and a half million dollar project. The stones have been sourced and they're ready to proceed with the same contractor that the town is using for the sheet pile wall. And as we understand from our consultants at GZA and the builder, Matt Melchiori. This is a project that could be built at the same time. There's one crane that could be utilized for both purposes. There are a lot of synergies to having mobilization on the site for both projects at the same time. There would have to be protocols established to make sure we're not in the way of each other. But our plan had been to start this construction, hopefully this winter, as soon as we're able to acquire the beach. Build the seawall and, and try to work out the logistics of having the sheet pile wall built at the same time. And to help facilitate that, Mr. Finnegan's been willing to pay for the, for the sheet, sheet pilings for the, for the sheet pile wall. The, the easements are all in place already, or the requirements for easements, they've all been drafted, the public access easements, it's all been taken care of by CRMC. We do understand that there was a very successful surfing, youth surfing program that the town moved to this location. In the, this summer, we, Mr. Finnegan would be very happy to have that program continue there. He's been working with the vendor involved in that program and we think that would be a, a wonderful thing for the town to have that continue. We've got some time constraints as well, our ascent to build this wall expires in September of 2022. So we can't wait for 2023 either, we, we'd like to get it going, we'd like to have it done by Memorial Day and we'd like to. Contribute a, you know, substantial sums toward the, the materials for the town to get going. If, if not just to get the sheet piles in, whether or not the town proceeds with putting a toe in at this point. At least they'd have the sheet piles in and the, and the Mary Carpenter's wall would be erected as a barrier. Between the, between the sea and Mattoonik Beach Road and. That's better than, that's better than nothing. You know, we, we'd like to do it simultaneously, we think that can be done, it may be that a, you know, work session with the engineers and the contractors. Might be necessary to fully vet that and they, my understanding is that they feel that that would be the best way to get both of these projects. Done and more efficiently and at lower costs would be to do them at the same time.
All right, thanks, Bill, I think that does make sense and thank you, Kevin, generous offer to, to help the town out and.
Just to put a number to, to the cost of sheet pile and, and I don't want to present to the public or to anyone else that. The offer from Mr. Finnegan is the price that we've received, but we understand that the cost of the sheet pile at this point is gonna be about $750,000. So whatever portion of that we can get means that we can do more road projects around town. Because really the funds that, that we're taking. This money from is the road improvement program. And if, if we can take monies out of the wall and put them onto horizontal pavement somewhere else. The community benefits elsewhere in, in town as well. So it's a, it's a, this is a very generous offer.
Definitely, and so I imagine there's been some discussion between Solicitor's Office and Mr. Landry about what language might need to be. Added at this point, if we wanted to. Approve this sales agreement, do we have proposed language?
So, this is Mike Ursula, this all just came up in the last three or four days. So although there is no specific language that has been agreed to or that has been shared between us. I think it's safe to bet that we'd be able to, to do that if you made some type of conditional approval.
Well, I don't want to monopolize this conversation, other questions, comments from council members?
Joe Vili, thank you, Abel. So one of the concerns that I had was public access and it sounds like that certainly has been satisfied, it sounds like it will be. As accessible as it is now or maybe even more accessible once both structures are built. The question I have, I maybe for Rob is. The federal grant funding is, is, has there ever been a case where we could go forward with the construction and then ask for reimbursement in a grant?
No, we've asked that question three different ways and the answer is always no. There's no way for us to structure it so that they're retroactively paying for work, I mean. From their perspective, they're trying to put money where it's needed, not where it was needed.
Yeah, okay, well, I mean, having said that, my opinion here is that this is a project.
my opinion here is that this is a project that needs to get going quickly, both walls, I think as quickly as possible. It sounds like we have a very generous offer on the table. And as I said earlier, the public access component of this seems to be, you know, satisfied. That's it, it's, it's something that the public will continue to be able to enjoy and probably to, to a further extent. So I mean, if there's a way that language could be worked out that says that both projects can start, I would think that with the same vendor that would be more doable than, you know, having two different construction companies down there. But I, I think I would trust at this point staff, including the solicitor's office and Public Works and the town manager's office to come up with some language that would satisfy what at least my intent on this project. Again, I think it needs to go forward and I think both projects need to go forward as quickly as possible. So, so that's sort of, that's my input on it. I would trust that staff would come up with language with Kevin and, and his attorney to, to satisfy all parties and, you know, success could be attained. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
So this is Deb Kelso. I know the Director of Public Services had some concerns about the simultaneous execution of both walls. So we, we did hear from him a number of concerns and I wonder, I wonder if we could hear from you now, John, about what your, what your thoughts are now.
So, I mean, it's a tight site. So me, one thought, you know, as far, I never really thought about simultaneous construction because it is a tight site. You know, we do have the wall constructed phase one in the east, perhaps the relic wall to the east could get reconstructed. There's area down there, but when we do excavate for the armor stone, which is an integral part of the sheet piles, it has to go in. We usually, what we did for phase one was we took the excavation spoils and put them where we now have the erosion. So we're going to have to move that material probably in front of the, the existing phase one wall. It, it, it could possibly be done, but it's going to be a very tight site. That, that's something that, you know, if Mr. Finnegan uses the same contractor as we do, you know, he's a pretty creative guy. He, he knows how to sequence construction projects. It may be doable.
So, so do we think the agreement here we could have for our next meeting, do you think that's doable to the folks involved? If we put off the final decision this, tonight and go for two weeks from now, that we could give you a final decision if we had a number on the contribution and a discussion with the firm involved, who's, who's doing the work, whether this could actually be a viable solution?
So I, I would suggest that we could, I would suggest that we could actually take a step in the direction tonight. I think that you could accept this proposal subject to an agreement to be presented to the town council that is satisfactory to the town solicitor, the manager and the director of public works with regard to cost sharing and scheduling for the construction of these two walls. And that we deliver that agreement that we've all agreed, Mike, John and I have agreed is a, a goods protects our interests agreement at the next meeting. So you can accept this bid subject to that if you'd like, or you could kick the thing down the road. I like the idea of moving ahead and putting some pressure on actually getting that, that agreement in place because we can accept and, and move to the next step at that point.
So I would be in full agreement with that, with that kind of stipulation, accepting the bid with, with the conditions.
I agree with that as well, Rob. This is Rory Mackenzie. I think this is a good deal. I think Kevin Finnegan stepping up to add the additional consideration, a large sum frees up money for us to use in other ways, as you asserted earlier, Rob. I think Kevin has a vested interest in the tunic area, you know, especially in those properties, considering Ocean Missus right there and various other properties and businesses that he owns. So I think we should be able to, you know, have confidence that he's going to have keep good upkeep and, you know, want to build a solid structure. And if both walls can be built simultaneously, it could possibly expedite the process, make these things complete and hopefully at a lower cost in total. I think this is a good deal and I agree with moving this forward, Rob, given the discretion to you, John Shock and Mike Ursula as to what you think is proper. But again, I think this is a good deal and the town should move forward.
Thank you, Rory.
Any other comments or?
Brian, the only other comment I would make is I like what Joe said. I like what Deb said and I like what Rory just said. I, I agree with all of that and I think if you can get an agreement started and get some wording corrected or work it out all before your next meeting in two weeks, then this will put you closer to putting a shovel in the ground than rather, rather than waiting.
All right, very good.
Joe Vili, I just have one more comment. So I would normally be a little bit concerned with not getting a full decision tonight because you have a new council sitting in two weeks. However, I think most of the concern I have would be satisfied because three of the five counselors will still be here. So I think initially I had a little bit of a concern about not making a final decision tonight, but I, I could, I could go along with it. You know, with the comfort that three of the five counselors are, will still be sitting and there seems to be agreement among you three that, that this is the way to proceed. So I'd, I'd be fine with that.
All right. Thank you, Joe. Do I hear your motion?
And I'll make a motion that we move forward with this deal with additional language to be presented to us at the next meeting and to make a decision at that meeting as to whether to move forward with the sale of the properties.
Mike, maybe just a, yeah, I, maybe I can help here. I, I think what the motion is, is to accept the proposal or to accept the bid that has been made by Kevin Finnegan, obviously through his company, subject to or conditioned upon an agreement between Mr. Finnegan's company and the town of South Kingstown with regard to the contribution to be made to the town by Mr. Finnegan for the construction of the town's wall and the simultaneous construction of the town's wall and the Mary Carpenter relic wall. I think those would be the conditions for the acceptance of the bid and that, that agreement, and I'm going slow so Susan gets all of this, and that agreement would be subject to approval of the town manager, the public services director and the town solicitor. I, I think that's what you were getting at Rory, so.
I'll amend my motion to add all that Mike Ursula had just asserted.
Joe Vili, second.
All right. Motion from Rory, second from Joe. Any discussion? Right. Is there anyone opposed? All right. That motion carries unanimously. Again, thank you, Kevin, Bill, Kevin. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving, guys. Have a good night. Brings us to 12H, which is a resolution authorizing the town manager to award a one-time performance bonus to the town clerk for work above and beyond that typically required. Said bonus shall be set at $5,000, which constitutes a small part of the salary savings associated with having the deputy clerk's position vacant since February. Further described in a memo from the town manager to the town council dated November 18th entitled granting a one-time performance bonus to the town clerk.
So I, 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 I don't want to make too much of this, but boy, it's hard to make too much of this. The work that's been done in the clerk's office over the course of the last eight months has been absolutely, 10 months now. It's been absolutely phenomenal. They have worked under very difficult conditions. The Secretary of State has changed the requirements for four elections, three of them actually coming out of the Secretary of States. We had a budget referendum, which is a fairly unusual thing in South Kingstown. We had two elections where voting was taking place at town hall for three weeks prior to the election day. We had 17,000 mail-in ballots processed by the clerk's office during the election cycle this year. In a typical year, you see two, maybe 300 and you see two elections, not four, and you certainly don't see in-person voting in town hall for three weeks before a general or before a primary election. All of that was being done while the clerk's office was maintaining its regular workload, getting birth certificates and death certificates and marriage certificates to the people who were in need of those certificates, allowing access to the land records, making land recordings. And by the way, land recordings have actually been up this year in South Kingstown, not down during COVID. So it's been a very, very busy office. All of this happening while COVID prevented the hiring of a new deputy town clerk. So Susan's been performing two jobs in that office, working weekends, working long nights, showing up early in the morning to get the job done. This is from my point of view, the smallest thank you for an incredibly well-done job that I could think of. If, if I could do more, if it were reasonable and prudent, I would. But this is something that I do because I want Susan to know that her work is deeply appreciated.
So this is Deb Kelso. I, I just wanted to say, I'm sure inside that clerk's office, it felt stressful, but from the outside looking in, it didn't appear so. So thank you for that. And I will make the motion to approve item 12H.
And I'll just add to what Deb said a little bit. Susan, you're doing a great job. And the fact that things run smoothly from the outside just speaks to how well you run the office. So well earned, this is.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
So we do have a motion and a second motion by Deb, second by Rory. Further comments or discussion?
Just a, a comment to Rob. First, thank you, Susan. I, I watched, I watched on an amazement. I don't know how it was done. Rob, if we need to fill that deputy clerk or assistant clerk at something. I mean, I know that there are a million plates spinning in the air. All right. I didn't hear what you said, Susan.
Internet is.
Position. Unfortunately, Susan's the one who has to do the interviews.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Get any further discussion? Well, I will say, Susan, just an amazing job, everybody there in the clerk's office. You know, they of course are able to collect overtime. You as the, the head of the clerk's office not able to collect that overtime. So this is a very small token of, of the town's appreciation. You know, you've stepped in this whole year after the, you know, many years of Dale being there and feel like you, you just walked into a buzzsaw, but you've handled it amazingly well. So thank you for that.
Thank you for your support. And I do have an amazing staff backing me up. They have been wonderful.
Good work, everyone. All right. Any last comments on this one? You have a motion, second. Anyone opposed? And that motion carries unanimously. And that brings us to 12I, a resolution ratifying executive order 2020-09, the sixth amendment dated November 10th, 2020, as shown on exhibit one of the agenda. You want to really quickly just tell us what this is, Rob?
Yes, this is the ratification of the local version of the governor's travel and quarantine order. So we're mirroring the, the governor's order. I will point out that the governor's order has actually changed. So where EO 2095 appears in this ratification, it should read EO 20-98. EO 20-95 should be replaced with EO 20-98. That's the governor's executive order that we are mirroring.
Do I hear a motion to approve this with that amendment?
This is Brian. I'll make that motion.
Deb Kelso, second.
We have a motion from Brian, a second from Deb. Any discussion? Anyone opposed? That motion carries unanimously. That brings us to 12J, a resolution ratifying executive order 2020-13, dated November 19th, 2020, as shown on exhibit two.
So last Thursday, we executed this executive order allowing the state of Rhode Island to begin operations of a COVID testing center at the old South Road School on South Road. So I'm asking for the council to ratify that. We did enter into a one-month agreement. You would be allowing me to continue through the one month. The next item on the agenda would allow me and Mike to work for a longer period of time and get a license or a lease with the state beyond December. So right now, we're just trying to make sure that the council is aware and has opined on the action taken on Thursday to allow operations to happen. And then at the next item, we will look for the authority to go ahead and negotiate a longer term.
Do I hear a motion on 12J?
Deb Kelso, motion to approve item 12J.
This is Brian. I'll second that motion.
Motion from Deb, second from Brian. Is there any further discussion? Anyone opposed? That motion carries unanimously and that brings us to 12K, resolution authorizing the town manager to negotiate and enter into a licensing or leasing agreement with the state of Rhode Island for the use of the town-owned property known as the South Road School for the purpose of establishing a COVID test administration location and/or a COVID vaccine administration site. Further described in a memo from the town manager to the town council dated November 9th.
And I will just note for the council that the state has indicated that they want to do both, that they want to do the test site and the vaccine distribution location as well.
And Rob, during that negotiation, I'm assuming covering all expenses for that building?
So the issue is really how to cover the expenses. The building does cost us about $3,000 a month to maintain. You know, just to have the heat going and to have the lights on and to maintain the utilities costs about $3,000. We were going to mothball it, you know, we were going to turn the electricity off, we were going to turn the heat down to bare minimum to keep the pipes from freezing. We were going to drain the pipes actually. By not doing those things, we do have probably about $3,000 a month in expenses. We are talking to the superintendent, the site will be used for the testing of teachers and fa, and, and staff at the school department and for vaccine, vaccine distribution for school personnel as well as town personnel. The schools have received care funds. We think that a portion of, of the costs can be covered by the school because they have care funds that are appropriate for this use. Those costs that cannot be covered by the, by the schools may be reimbursable through FEMA. We're, we're just going to have to sort of work out how to make sure that our costs are covered and we're held harmless. What we can't do is we can't end up with a 30 or 50 or $60,000 hole in our budget because of this facility. We're not going to let that happen, but we're also not looking to make a profit on this thing. So we'll figure it out.
Joe Vili, a motion to approve agenda. Joe Vili, a motion to approve agenda item 12K.
This is Brian. I'll second that motion.
Motion from Joe, second from Brian. Discussion? I think it's really exciting that we're actually talking realistically about distributing a vaccine here right in town. And we've heard good news about vaccines being developed. So hopefully that's sooner rather than later. Very happy to see this happening. Alright, is there anyone opposed to 12K? That motion carries unanimously and that brings us to the end of tonight's agenda. And so do I hear a motion to adjourn?
This is Brian. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Joe Vili, second.
Motion from Brian, second from Joe. Very fitting.
I was thinking that.
Is there any discussion?
I just want to wish you both well in your quote unquote retirement from the town council. It has been a pleasure working with you for the time you have been on council and I have been able to to serve you both as deputy clerk and as town clerk.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, both of you. Thank you.
Night, Councilman.
And with that, if I see no one opposed, I'll say that the meeting is adjourned.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. You too. Stay safe.